All right, looks like everybody's here. Well, good evening, everyone. Let's call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with the public audience tonight. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26th Amendment Drive. As required by Town Manager Maria Capriola, all requests for viewing files require the Freedom of Information request. Many of these requests are files that could be accessed immediately, not delayed for months. Town Manager Maria Capriola says she prides herself on transparency, but this is not true. According to the Freedom of Information Act, Section 120-1-10, formerly Section 119, access to public records exempt records. Exempt is otherwise provided by any federal law or state statute. All records maintained or kept on file by a public agency, whether or not such records are required by any law, by any rule or regulation, shall be public records and every person shall have the right to, one, inspect such records promptly during regular business, regular office or business hours. I reviewed my requests for previous zoning officer Janelle Mullins' salary payments and found that there were payments made for weeks that were not worked. I received an email stating case closed since payments are made for a previous week. With all payments made, there remains a discrepancy in overpayments for time not worked. Unless you received a severance package, the payments don't calculate to time work and money owed for escrow accounts. This discrepancy requires an audit. Gertrude Ducey, a past librarian, was terminated for tardiness when she was on medical leave after 14 years of employment. A printout from a computer log was used to establish tardiness. The grievance filed by Gertrude Ducey with the town was dismissed. However, the State Unemployment Department ruled that Gertrude Ducey was eligible for unemployment and was, quote, "suspended for reasons other than willful misconduct," end quote. Presently, the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities is representing Gertrude Ducey and send a letter to the town for written responses to questions asked. The letter and the response are public information, but I have not received the information I requested under FOI. Taryn Schreger, a past recreation employee, filed grievance against the town. It is alleged that Taryn received a withdrawal payment. This is available under FOI and I have not received the agreement and payments made. Resignation letters from past employees, since this is time-consuming, there isn't acceptable delay on all records. Flash drive information from a union meeting. Town labor attorney log and payments from the town, this should be readily available. The IA report on vandalized police locker has been finalized and should be available under FOI. Under FOI, I received Chief Bolter's discipline log from 2008 to present. The headings are Employee, and I omitted the name of the offices, issue date, discipline type, IA incident if applicable, description. Under the management of Chief Bolter in 2019, there were 10 disciplinary actions, two written disciplines, one training, five counseling, one verbal reprimand, and one termination. There were six Internal Affairs investigations. The descriptions were two neglect of duty, insubordination, incompetence, one weapon readiness, one incompetence, one missed star during search, one vehicle speed during pursuit, and three emergency driving, one untruthfulness. After reviewing the police incident log, there appears to be discrepancies in these logs. In 2020, there was an incident of a slip and fall in the police department by one of the officers, which was noted on the incident report as administrative, not aided. In 2019, there was a call through police department concerning a town employee's conduct. The incident was noted as miscellaneous, although it was alleged that this was a drug-related offense with the employee suspended with pay on medical leave. The file was locked by the police department and the report unavailable to the public, inconsistent with other reports. In 2019, there was an incident called sex offense, but the incident with the same case number was noted assist. In 2019, there was a death investigation noted in the morning when the call was for a welfare check. The death was not confirmed until the afternoon. In 2018, there were two sex offense reports that were changed to assist. The remarks were changed for book from sex offense to assist citizen and then changed back after printing. Is this the policy of the police department to change incidents on public incidents and use the appropriate designation internally on high-profile incidents? Does the police department have two sets of books? Does this change affect the reporting of various agencies that compile data? Is this legal? Both the police department and the town have union grievances pending that will be costly to both employees when they return to work. The police department overwhelmingly voted no confidence in Chief Bolter, but we have yet to hear the reason for the vote. How can the Board of Selectmen --
Joan, I'll ask you to wrap it up, please.
-- Maria Capriola's substantial raise with all these grievances pending, with town hall, a toxic work environment? All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public audience? Yes.
Woodham McNiven, August Road. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Back on November 25th, I stood up here on behalf of Simsbury Community Television before the last board, most of which were here, are not here tonight. And you may recall that the main thrust of my speech that night was to request that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education double the amount of their annual donations to SCTV to support our 2020 operating budget. I listed a number of reasons why SCTV's revenues would have trouble meeting its operating costs in 2020, and I'm not here tonight to revisit all that. You know all that. But I am here to reiterate that should we get this increase, these donations would be used for our operating budget. I'm here tonight simply to inform the Board about SCTV's plans to pursue PEGPISHA grant money for much-needed capital equipment. And tonight seemed a good night to do it because Item D of tonight's Board of Selectmen itinerary will cover the Simsbury Public Library's proposed grant application to PEGPISHA, which stands for Public Educational and Government Programming and Educational Technology Investment Account. Now, should SCTV obtain the PEGPISHA grant money, the funds will be used to do a number of things. The first of which is to upgrade the notebook computer interface right here, which is an old 1980s video graphics array or VGA-style connection. And we're going to upgrade it to a more modern, high-definition media interface for HDMI connections. And that's mainly for the slideshows up there. Not all the slideshows that presenters give here can we capture on SCTV. I can take camera two, I can swing it around, I can, you know, videotape the screen, and we get the information across, but it looks really low-budget. Admittedly, we are operating on a peer budget, but we're trying to appear a little bit professional than that. Also what we'll do is we're going to replace all the microphones up in the Board of Education room to a wireless system. At present, someone like me who covers the -- I cover the Board of Selectmen meeting, but the person who covers the Board of Education meeting has to go in before every meeting and wire every single mic. It's labor-intensive, it's time-consuming, and the mics are getting old. And last, the funds will also be used to make upgrades to our studio at Eno, and this will substantially improve SCTV's content and broadcast operations across the board. So in conclusion, although we still respectfully request an increase in the Board of Selectmen's and the Board of Education's annual contributions to SCTV that will be used for daily operations, we also just wanted to let you know, let the Board members know, that we are actively pursuing funds from grants and other means to support the purchase of new, modern equipment to keep SCTV viable into the foreseeable future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan?
Hi, good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm here to advertise for a documentary that's going to be at the Simsbury Public Library on Monday, January 27th. It's called Eastern White Pine: The Tree Rooted in American History, and it's done by a documentary filmmaker in Massachusetts who recently did a film about old growth forests in New England. This is primarily about the history of the white pine and its importance in just all aspects of colonial life is a main focus. Shipping tree masks back and it's just incredible, you know, research that he did for this film. It also includes some, you know, more modern use of white pine, modern ecology, and there's a little bit on health, forests and health, and forests and brain health at the very end. Full disclosure, I'm in the film at the very end, and part of it was filmed in Beldon Forest. So that was great. When he told me that he was filming this and asked for some places to film, of course, I said, well, why don't you come to Simsbury and do some filming in Beldon? So we, our whole town, has a little cameo in this film. It did premiere about a month ago or so down at CineStudio in Hartford, and we had a pine-themed reception, which included homemade pine needle tea and pine snacks. And we also had a piney-scented lobby and a pine tree on site, so we're billing it as a multisensory experience. The snacks and the pine needle tea were a huge hit, so we're bringing those to Simsbury, and I'm hoping they turn out as well as they did in Hartford, but past performance is no guarantee of future performance, so just letting you know about that. It's at 6:00 PM. The food with the pine-themed reception will be at 6:00 PM, and we're also going to have other food besides pine snacks, in case you don't like pine. But you should try it. And the film starts at 6:30. And the reason why I had idea for the pine needle tea is because when I was in sixth grade, I had a great teacher who brought our whole class ice fishing and made us pine needle tea while we were ice fishing, which was really, really special. So I hope you can come, although I have a feeling it might conflict with the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It does. We can go there, though, for that.
It could be super quick, and if you're there by 6:30, you'll get a little snack and be able to see the film. So that's up to Eric.
What pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Film trip.
Then the other tiny announcement that I have is just on behalf of The Grange, we're so excited about the Martin Luther King history at The Grange, and we've been looking into that a little bit and contacted the various historical societies. And we, you know, we kind of inherited the building and everything and have been trying to get all of our systems up in shape, but we did find a secret closet that we hadn't looked in before, which has been pretty fun, which has a bunch of stuff where they used to do plays and all kinds of stuff, and this big metal container that says sugar on it, but actually has just a huge archive of records that we want to try and go through. And interestingly, we have a beautiful wood floor there that we got refinished, and we've been thinking about doing dances for a while. We just haven't gotten that off the ground, and that's what Martin Luther King had come to The Grange for, was for dances. So that's given us a little bit extra motivation to get that going. And one thing we did find, which I intended to bring, but I will bring some other time, is a receipt that we found where The Grange was applying for a tax exemption in 1940 so that they didn't have to pay taxes on the admission paid to their dances. So anyway.
Tax.
Super historical receipt thing. So I think we're still offering our dances tax-free from the town, so we're going to continue that tradition, and I'll keep you updated if we find anything else interesting. And if you're not in the Board of Selectmen, come to the film on 27th.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else for public audience tonight? Okay. We have a presentation from the Farmington Valley Health District. The Health District recently completed, or I should say embarked, on a five-year strategic plan, and our presentation tonight is from Executive Director Jennifer Curtanis and Board Chair Brandon Robertson to provide an update. So please come on up and, you know, we're really interested in understanding the strategic plan and also the implication for upcoming budget season. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
It's great to be here. I'm having a sense of deja vu. Some of you may know I've spent a lot of time in this room over the years, so it's nice to be back. It's nice to know some things don't change.
They certainly don't.
I'm going to be very brief, and then I'm going to hand it off to Jennifer Curtanis, our Executive Director. But as Eric said, my name's Brandon Robertson. My day job is town manager in Avon, and I have been involved with the Board for about 20 years now, since September I've been the chair. So just very briefly, you know why we're here. Maria provided you some great background material in your packets. For those of you who are new or who may not know a lot about the district, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about us. We are a very durable, successful example of a regional organization. Looking back in the records, it's interesting to note, we were founded in 1976, and we started off with three towns. We were Canton, East Granby, and Granby, and Simsbury joined in 1987. And today, the district is comprised of 10 towns, and we serve over 100,000 residents. So it's been extraordinarily successful. The district is governed by a Board of Directors. As you probably know, each town has a number of appointments to the Board of Directors, and our mission is largely defined by state statutory requirements. And Jennifer will talk more about this, but we are in the process of going through an accreditation process to improve our ability to deliver on those statutory mandates. There are basically three revenue sources. That is where we get our income. The first, in no particular order, is a state grant that we receive that is based on a per capita basis. The second, our fees for service that we provide. And the third are the contributions from our member towns. And as you may know, the current year per capita contribution is $6.05. The Board has not finalized deliberations for fiscal year '21, but we're going to be sending out guidance to the CEOs of each of the towns advising them to expect a $6.50 per capita for fiscal year '21. Again, it is a function of our strategic plan and accreditation process, and Jennifer will very ably walk you through that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, and Happy New Year. It was just under a year that we were here and presented on our five-year strategic plan, and I know there's a few new people. I wasn't planning on going into a lot of detail, but I'll try and hit some of the high points, and if anyone has any questions, I can provide past presentations, that sort of thing. So by way of review, some of the driving forces that initiated our strategic plan over the last two years were primarily statutory mandates. And in 2014, the General Assembly changed our statutory mandates, made them more contemporary. They happen to align with accreditation standards, but there are 10 overarching functions that they really expect local health departments to do. And upon self-reflection, I've been with the district for about six or seven years. I lose track. I love it so much, I lose track. But about six years, we really were not in a position to meet our statutory mandates. The things that the people know us for most commonly, the regulatory functions, restaurant inspections, et cetera, we were doing reasonably well, although one of the first things we needed to do six years ago was bring on additional staff because we weren't able to keep pace with the number of inspections we had to do. But there were many other things that the health department just was not doing. And a couple of things that are required of a local health department overall is to track and monitor the health status of our communities so that we know what are those things that are causing the most premature morbidity and mortality? What are those things that we as a community can do to help prevent those things? And we had never completed a community health assessment in any comprehensive way. So those types of things were really driving our need to look at ourselves and figure out how do we move forward. Regionalization and consolidation, while it has not necessarily been top of mind under our current administration, certainly last year and years prior, there was a lot of push for additional consolidation, regionalization, and we didn't know what that might look like for our health district if we were not meeting state mandates, et cetera. So those were some of the things, excuse me, that were really driving our need to look more critically. So last year in June, we came and presented our five-year strategic plan and outlined some of the major things that we really needed to do to get to the department where it needed to be over the five years. And we talked about the fact that it was going to impact both a need for additional staffing and expertise, as well as a financial commitment of our member towns. And we presented to you in June of last year where we were relative to our municipal contribution, and when you look at other districts across the state, we were really, you know, rock bottom in terms of municipal contribution. And while we want to keep our costs reasonable, we also were sort of digging ourselves a little bit out of a hole. So the things that we highlighted were the need on the staffing side and expertise side to increase the ability for us to have expertise that can really look at data, synthesize that data, turn that data into actionable information. We needed to increase our capacity in the health education and more global community health arena, and some additional expertise that really allowed us to get out, build greater partnerships with our municipalities, people in our communities that are doing work in the public health sphere, grant writing, and evaluation. We also identified the need to invest in a community health assessment and a health improvement plan. Those are not easy undertakings, especially when you're talking about 10 towns, different types of towns, many, many different sources of data, et cetera. And also, we needed to increase our investment in the accreditation pursuit. The State Health Department is accredited. Many local health departments are pursuing accreditation in the state. Three local health departments are already accredited, and that really, the accreditation aligns with the statutory mandates, and it's really kind of that benchmark or gold standard for where we should be. So that's the backdrop, and this is what we presented in terms of the five-year plan, what it would look like, and what our projections were in terms of the municipal per capita investment. So we're, in year 1920, our per capita is 605, and we are, as we prepare for 2021, as Brandon mentioned, we're looking at a per capita of 650, which is at the low end of the range that we presented to you. So progress, and sorry, these slides aren't particularly creative, nice to look at, but in 2018-19, our first priority was to hire that full-time accreditation coordinator, provide funding for our community health assessment, and at that time, our per capita fee was 550. So right now, I'm happy to announce that we, in fact, did bring on a full-time person. She does not work full-time in accreditation. We don't have the liberty of that, but she really has expanded our health education, community health, and our partnership-building capacity. And she is also chairing our community health assessment, that's CHA Advisory Group. That group has been established. At this point in time, we have collected all of the secondary data that we know is available to us through state surveillance systems, partner organizations, et cetera. We have a very robust advisory group that includes representatives from all of our member towns, and so that work is going very, very well. Certainly, moving in this direction required us to reorient staff and Board members, and that's all was done. And we also have a performance management software platform that's allowing us to track our performance, not just towards meeting our statutory mandates, but also some of our benchmarking outcome measures specific to programming. So those were some of the main accomplishments of 2018-19. And just, you know, I will say that this is somewhat of a culture change for some of our staff that have worked for many years in the district, doing primarily environmental health. And actually, while that's taken a little bit of time, that's moving along very well. So 2019, the year that we're in now, our goal was to bring on a part-time epidemiologist. That's the person that really is going to help us with our ability to look at data, synthesize data, provide reports out to our partner organizations, better measure whether we're making progress on different health benchmarks, et cetera. The funding for the community health assessment extended into 1920, and the per capita currently is at 605. So I'm happy to report that, you know, in general, we continue to improve our ability to meet the state mandates. And the state annual, we are required to report to the state every year on those 10 statutory mandates. We just completed that back in the fall, and so we are moving forward, although there are still things that we obviously have to work on. We are currently interviewing, we've issued or drafted an RFP, and are also interviewing potential consultants to work with us on actually writing the community health assessment and helping us with the health improvement phase. That will involve a lot of community-based meetings, working with the community to also hear from them what they perceive to be some of our major health challenges, and what resources they can bring to bear to help our communities address those. I mentioned the advisory group. The epidemiologist's job description is developed, and that's a priority over the next month. And as I mentioned, while we've looked at secondary data, that's data that's available to us through existing mechanisms, be that the State Health Department, we have data gaps that will require us to collect data, and so we're working on that strategy right now. I think the last slide, I don't, it's very difficult to read, but I wanted to just show, this is our progress just specific to the community health assessment and the health improvement plan, which is a very significant undertaking, and we've made great progress, and we're really on target to have a community health assessment by the end of this year and well into the health improvement phase. And that really is foundational to a lot of the other work that we need to do. With that, I'll just answer any questions people might have, if any.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
Well, Joan, but thank you very much.
I'll leave these with Melissa, but some of our annual reports from last year, if people wanted to get a better sense of some of our --
Great. I appreciate you both being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The First Selectmen's Report and then the Town Managers' Report. On Monday, January 20th, Simsbury will once again commemorate renowned civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The ceremony will be taking place at First Church, starting at 2:00 PM. Congresswoman Johanna Hayes will deliver the keynote. The ceremony will celebrate Dr. King's life and particularly his time in Simsbury during the summers of 1944 and 1947. The ceremony is free, and the public is encouraged to attend. The new tariff room at the Simsbury Public Library is officially open. The library hosted a reception for the Tariff Village Association on Sunday to celebrate the occasion. The new program space can be reserved for meetings, concerts, presentations, and it can comfortably hold upwards of 60 people?
Eighty to 120.
Eighty to 120. I'm so off with that number.
Thank you, Lisa.
That's not in the written report. I just went off script. All right. Great.
It's just script.
Case work on your corner. So on January 29th, staff from Congresswoman Hayes' office will be at the Simsbury Public Library from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's free, nonpartisan service, open to all residents of Connecticut's 5th District. If a constituent has a question for or a problem with any federal agency, IRS, Social Security, Medicare, VA, et cetera, the Congresswoman's casework staff can inquire on that end Medicare, VA, et cetera, the Congresswoman's casework staff can inquire on that individual's behalf. Residents can drop in, and no appointment is necessary. We just heard a presentation from the Farmington Valley Health District. They will be holding a public hearing on their budget on March 3rd at noon at their offices at 95 River Road in Canton. I'd like to welcome a girl at heart to the Simsbury Town Shops. The Chamber of Commerce hosted a ribbon cutting last week. A girl at heart buys and sells American Girl dolls and related accessories. Welcome to Simsbury. Last but not least, Christmas trees are picked up by your contracted trash hauler. Customers of pains will have their trees picked up on their regular trash day this week, the week of January 13th. All Waste will pick up trees on your normal collection day, the week of January 27th.
Maria.
Thank you. Good evening. For Board of Selectmen Business, as you know, we have finalized March 7th as our annual budget workshop date. Tentatively, we do expect that to be from about 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We'll be holding that here in the main meeting room. This will be similar to previous years, so we will have department heads available. They'll do a presentation. They'll be available for questions. We'll review operating and capital budgets. We'll also be sure to provide some light refreshments for breakfast and lunch to everyone. And Mike is going to actually be our pilot for video conferencing it. So, we're going to work on that. We're actually pretty excited about piloting and trying that technology out. So, thank you, thank you, Mike, for doing that. Great. For departmental news and notes, good news to report. We have hired our new land use specialist, Laura Barkowski. Some of you may recall, Carrie Viber, who had worked in that department for quite a long time, took a lateral transfer and is doing fantastic at Public Works, and we have hired her replacement. She does come, Laura comes to us from the town of Monroe, where she previously worked as the Land Use Administrative Assistant for a number of years. She has a bachelor's degree in Justice and Law Administration and has previously worked as a paralegal, which is really helpful in the land use field. We're excited to have her join our team, and we believe she's really going to be a major asset to the department. So, please join me in welcoming her next time you stop up to the planning office. From Public Works, good news to report. Some of you may recall, we had been working on generator projects at the public library as well as Eno. Those projects are now complete. The generator at the library is fully functional as of today, and Eno will be ready to go live and fully functional as of tomorrow. We're quite excited about these projects in terms of building our resiliency for storm events, but it's also going to provide us some flexibility, again, during extreme storm events to provide if we need to, I often refer to them as sort of comfort stations, daytime shelters, if you will, so not an overnight shelter. But again, if folks are without power for extended periods of time, it at least provides a space for either heating or cooling, charging electronics, getting a cup of coffee, just again, helping people be more comfortable during prolonged power outages in particular. So, really great project for the community, and we're so glad to have those up and running. Just a quick reminder from last report, but we do have our AARP Tax Assistance coming up, as well as the AARP Smart Driver course. And lastly, wanted to make sure that folks were aware, but this is a terrific program that our Social Services Department does. They partner with the Police Department, and it's a women's self-defense program. It's free of charge. There's no cost for residents who might like to participate. It's a three-part program, and the classes are January 22nd, 27th, and January 29th. If someone is interested in participating, please contact Officer Devin, and we have provided her phone number. Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Maria. Selectmen action. Item A is tax refund request. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $32,785.33, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item B, Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming has provided a $5,000 donation to Simsbury Social Services to support programs, including our food closet and energy assistance. The Garrity family makes a significant contribution to social services each year. Very grateful for that. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to accept a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming, Inc., in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department programs that assist our residents in need?
I'll make that motion with our thanks.
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Yeah, thank you. Item C is the acceptance of sponsorships related to the 350th Celebration Events. So, the Celebration Committee has been hard at work getting ready for events. It's 2020 already. I can't believe it. I know. And we've received four generous donations from local businesses. Before these motions, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. Is there, are there any words you wanted to say about what's going on? Or should we just?
Well, most importantly, thank you to those businesses who stepped up to be sponsors. We had a terrific response. People have been very generous. In addition to those ones that are on your agenda tonight, we have a few more that are in the wings to be finalized, and I think we are well on our way to being able to provide most of our events either free or at a reduced cost to the public, which was our goal. So, we're very pleased about that. We continue to pursue sponsorships, and we encourage residents, if they would like to be a part of this and donate for $35, you can be a patron, and you get a nice sticker for your car, and it's terrific. We also have merchandise for sale, if anybody's interested. Yeah, and all the proceeds go to supporting the 350th Anniversary.
Where can people pick those up?
You place your order online through the Parks and Rec website.
What's the 350 website?
What, the 350 website, I should say, and Parks and Rec will process your payment. Your order will be delivered to the library, where it can be picked up at the main circulation desk.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Could you use your Parks and Rec account to pay?
Yeah.
How you charged me last week? I used that time. Tom called me. It was my daughter in a panic because I hadn't paid for something, and she was there, and of course, I embarrassed my kids once more. Yeah. And I was like, I could help your daughter. Just not the library, it's Parks and Rec. Will you pay your bills? I paid that fee of cash. Traffic ticket. Whatever. Okay.
We had to do an ordinance to get you to stop by the library, please.
Before this gets any further out of hand, is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to accept $18,500 from Ensign Bickford, $7,500 from McLean, $5,000 from Liberty Bank, and $5,000 from Tobacco Valley Solar as sponsorships for the 350th Anniversary Celebration Events?
I'll move those through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you to all of the businesses.
Thank you.
Item D is a proposed Simsbury Public Library grant. So, we heard a little bit about this in public audience. The state makes grants available for public libraries that support investments in education technology, and the town is seeking about $75,000 for some specific upgrades. Were there any questions that folks had about this item?
I didn't have questions, more comments.
Sure.
Having previously been involved with SCTV doing the Peg Pisha grants, they are, been used and benefited the town to the point where that's how people can watch us at home. So, it's a great thing, and thank you to the library for doing this.
Absolutely. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to approve the library's application for a Peg Pisha grant to fund an upgrade to audiovisual equipment in the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library Program Room, add equipment to the Innovators Workshop Maker Space, and enhance technology offerings in the Children's Department?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Is there also a motion to accept the Peg Pisha grant and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award, should we get it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E is the supplemental appropriation for the ice rink boiler. Just before the holidays, we got word that the boiler at the ice rink stopped functioning, and it's beyond its useful life and unable to be repaired at this point. The cost to replace it is just under $10,000, and it's staff's recommendation that we transfer $10,000 from the general fund to purchase a new boiler. Maria, is there anything you wanted to add to this item?
Just simply that the transfer would also need to be presented to the Board of Finance. So, should you recommend that this evening, we'll present this to them for their meeting next week.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the, so I understand you're transferring from the general fund versus using the funds, the money already in the Simsbury Farms Fund?
In the special revenue fund.
Yeah, what's the benefit either way? I just, is that?
Sure, sure, I can help elaborate. So, this was an unanticipated large expense, and we currently don't have funding budgeted within the Simsbury Farms. This is essentially the Park and Rec, the special revenue fund budget, and that budget in particular is severely strained. It's part of the sort of analysis we're going to get to later in the evening, partly being that things like facilities costs are typically, smaller facilities costs being absorbed by program users as opposed to the general fund. But this was a rather large, unanticipated expense that wasn't budgeted for. And again, our recommendation would be, since it is a facility-related expense, that it would be more appropriate for the general fund to pick up that cost. You're welcome.
Any question, Wendy?
Yeah, and if I could just add some, from a historic standpoint, we, the, we being the general fund, the taxpayers directly have traditionally picked up capital expenditures for the facility. Again, I'm sure there's examples where that isn't true, but generally, I mean, we bonded the buildings. We generally pay for the improvements down there. So, to me, this is consistent with how we've done it. The Board of Finance might opt to put it in the end, but all they're doing is, again, moving the money around, to your question, and then it just, it convolutes the accounting even further that we have down there. So, I think it's cleaner to have it this way.
Any other questions?
They didn't need it this weekend.
Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to recommend to the Board of Finance a transfer of $10,000 from the general fund to the Simsbury Farms Fund to cover the cost of a new boiler?
So moved.
Second, Wendy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item F, so the town and the Board of Education currently have separate finance departments, and there's been interest in some time in exploring a shared services model where the town and the schools would share financial management services. In your packets is a memorandum where the town and the Board of Ed would share these services, starting on a temporary basis. This is both exciting as well as a change from how we've operated in the past. So, I thought it would be helpful, Maria, if you, if you were to outline the highlights of what is being proposed.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So, what we are proposing, since the Board of Education does have an immediate need for financial management services due to an unanticipated leave of absence for a staff member, that we have been working with the superintendent in terms of how we, the town, might be able to assist in providing that oversight and that financial management for them, at least initially on a temporary basis. So, the agreement tonight, the initial period would be through the end of the fiscal year, with two additional three-month renewal periods that essentially Superintendent Curtis and I, through mutual agreement, could extend the agreement out for about an 11-month period. The thought being there is that if on a temporary basis, the financial management and oversight being provided by the town is working beneficially for all involved, that during that time period, we would then work on a plan or a possible proposal to bring back to everybody for a more permanent shared services model. Again, I think that at the end of the day, this is really going to greatly benefit both the town and the Board of Education, and ultimately, our taxpayers, because while we are two separate entities, the revenues are coming from the same pool of taxpayers, and we really are one community. I do think long-term, again, we'd be looking at capturing efficiencies of scale, excuse me, economies of scale, more specialization in the work. And again, I think that over the last two years in particular, the Board of Ed and the town have been really working to collaborate on a lot of employee benefits-related items, risk management-related items, as well as financial management items. So, I think this is sort of a next step and a progression in that. I also feel very confident in Amy's abilities to help lead us through this at least temporary period to start. She previously had worked in a shared services model and had served as the financial agent for a regional school system. So, I think we're well positioned. If we're going to try it out, now is a, now is a good time to do that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Yeah, thank you.
What questions do folks have?
Is this along the lines, thank you, perfect, can't wait. Is this along the lines of, I mean, to a certain extent, this is contingency planning, right? I mean, do you have, you have a, they have an unexpected absence? And in, prior to that, prior to this model, this idea coming along, what was their contingency plan in that space, in that position, if that person was gone? And either side, either their side or I side? No. So, this is the beginning of that as well. So, it not only is it the shared services, but I think, I guess I'm sort of leading the witness here, in the sense that maybe we should start doing this across the board in all of our crucial functional areas where we have single asset subject matter experts. My business would be pressed if I lost one of my single subject matter, and I have contingency planning, contingency planning for each of those positions. Usually calls upon me elevating the issue up to my parent company, asking for an asset from there. But I think this is also a benefit to that as well.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. So, something that has been important to me is building more redundancy, more depth, more resiliency with our rank structure and our organizational structure. So, we are always relying on a single person for expertise, and I think that in the long term, absolutely, this will help achieve that.
And then it also, as an outset, shows you where you may not need to, or you can actually go with a single subject matter expert in a shared service model going forward, as we look for more savings.
Yeah, and that, that was my, my point. I'm very much in favor of this despite the sad circumstances that led us to it. But I do think that it's, it's an opportunity for the town and the Board of Ed to explore this model, as Erica said, and Maria said, it's something we've been looking at for a while. We've already talked about it, but just want to make sure that we're capturing the goods, the bads, the uglies all along the way here, because I would hate for us to get 60, 90, 150 days or whatever, and we talk about permanent or whatever it is, and now we've got to bring a consultant in or do studies or anything else. Let's just make sure we learn as much and everything as we possibly can now, so that we're ready to transition forward with the challenges and the good stuff and figure to work that out. And that includes, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of challenges of putting this together, and I can't impress upon the public, and the other boards enough. You don't just put two groups together and it works, right? There's a lot at play here in terms of skill sets, expertise, bargaining units, contracts, the whole nine yards. So, this is, this is not as simple as we wave our, our hand and put the groups together, right?
Right, absolutely.
But thank you for embarking on this.
Yeah, and I think I just really can't emphasize enough, I want to thank Amy for her willingness to really step up and really help the town and the Board of Ed during this very difficult time. I know both the superintendent and I are very appreciative to her for, for being willing to do this. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
As are we.
And I'm thankful that we've got two groups that are willing to talk about this. Yeah. Because there's nothing tougher than having a subject that is uncomfortable that you have to address. Kudos to everybody.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the memorandum of agreement between the town of Simsbury and the Simsbury Board of Education for Financial Management Services? And also, effective tomorrow, January 14th, 2020, to authorize an increase in the finance director's salary of 10% during the temporary period of shared financial management services between the town of Simsbury and the Simsbury Board of Education?
So moved.
So, Sean moved. Mike seconded. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Good luck, folks.
Item G is the Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund Analysis. So, staff has been working on an analysis of the special revenue fund, which has been operating at a deficit for seven of the past 11 years. This analysis was a goal of the Board of Selectmen, and I wanted to recognize Melissa Appleby, Amy Meriwether, Tom Taberski, and Tom Fitzgerald for the work that they've done. It's, it's really awesome. It's clear. It's, it's a compelling story, and I really appreciate the way it's turned out. It's their recommendation that we form a work group to review the analysis in partnership with the Board of Finance and Culture Parks and Rec, and make a recommendation with, I think, the goal of all three of these boards, you know, having consensus around ultimately how to proceed forward. So, I wanted to just open it up for thoughts or conversation.
I think this is something that I think in my tenure on the board, this is the sec, at least the second or third time, we've revisited this issue. It's good because it is something that affects everybody in town. In talking to some people that I know, when they've had somebody on the fence, whether they've moved to Simsbury or not, if they take them up to the farms, either in the wintertime or the summertime, it's a deal closer, as they put it. And it's a spectacular asset. It really is. So, I think figuring out how that works in with what we want to be about in Simsbury is a good thing.
Yeah, this is my.
Yeah, this is my third crack at this. We thought we solved it a few other times, but the politics of the budget got in the way. So, I know we promised the Board of Finance that we would solve it this time. Again, I think one of the challenges that shouldn't be lost here, and as we, we don't need to get into the full report right now, but it is well-done, is the whole, if we spike golf out, we've continued to debate since I was in high school, where the golf revenue should go, who should get the benefit of it, et cetera. So that is, is not an easy topic. And let's not get lost in there that the taxpayers paid for the whole facility. So while the golf users do support it with substantial revenue, as do the pool users, et cetera, the taxpayers still pay for a lot of the infrastructure that's down there. We're about to pay for the sprinkler systems and a lot of things. So this is a much more complicated conversation than a lot of folks in the past have led us to believe, and there's lots of different debates on it. So by no means, again, much like our prior gen item, do we wave a wand, move a couple of numbers around, and we've, we've solved this. We've solved, we've tried to solve this through some pretty substantial expense management, and Tom's predecessor, and I know Tom's done a great job to keep controls, but Jerry Tonner did as well, of trying to control expenses as best they could. But we squeezed, we squeezed a lot of blood out of that, out of that stone already. And as you look, we know, we're the ones that approve of the fees, so we have a pretty substantial skin in this game in terms of the financial analysis every year, are we making it upright? And then, at the end of the day, you know, the question always comes out, well, if you make a change, do the taxpayers pay for it? Well, you know, friends, if you, if you look at one of the slides, the taxpayers already are paying for this through the, through the general fund transfers every year. And it's not exactly, to no fault of anybody, but it's not exactly the most transparent way to do it. Because we don't necessarily tell them upfront, because we don't know, and then a transfer's done at the end of the year. And there's, there's certainly a different, perhaps better way to do all this. I know Amy and Maria are very interested, from an accounting standpoint, of cleaning this up. But again, it's not as simple as we move somebody's salary over here, and somebody's retirement over there, and boom, this is done. So, I'm looking forward to this, this being our fourth go-around.
And I, I sense, I'm only going to make a comment, because I sense that I'll probably be making more comments of some level of participation going forward in this endeavor. And I, I want it to be clear that the, this, we're not going to be, thank you for the analysis, first of all. Again, that's fantastic. The report's wonderful. We are not going to make, be making a analysis of what is wrong, or what is right with the Parks and Rec Department. And that is important, and that distinction is very clear. We're not going to be making, we're not going to be weighing what program has a greater, is due greater recognition or less, or which one should be, be given more investment or not, or which one is the anchor, or which one is the, the bow. So that is not the intention of this. It is to, it is to hopefully move the, treat the revenues, treat the operations of that organization, and put it into the right, the right, the right section of essentially the town's P and L. And stop the, the discomfort, or the, the grayness of how each year we move back and forth, which, with the monies that need, are needed to support that budget, or not support the budget. Not anybody's fault why, why we are today. Things move and flow based upon times and where they are in needs. So that's, I want that to be clear. Hope that, I don't know if I just said that clearly, bud.
Yeah, thanks Chris, it is. Anybody else want to add anything? Would there be people here tonight that'd be interested in serving on that work group?
I'll take a crack at it.
Okay. Thank you both. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to create a work group with the purpose to review the Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund Analysis and make policy recommendations to the full Board of Selectmen? And further, would there be a motion to create membership slots for the work group as follows? Two members of the Board of Selectmen, Sean Eskam and Chris Peterson, two members from the Board of Finance, and two members from Culture Park and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, thank you. Item H is the, setting a, a public hearing date for the Small Cities Grant Application. The Simsbury Housing Authority is interested in applying for a Small Cities Grant. This is federal money that's given out by the state to communities in support of projects that benefit people of low and moderate incomes. The Housing Authority is hoping to use the money for specific capital improvements at the Owen Murphy Apartments. And one of the steps in this grant program is holding a public hearing. So if this board is supportive, we can schedule that tonight for a meeting in February. Was there anything that staff wanted to add, or any questions?
No, I think we're all set.
Okay. Any questions?
No comment. I met with Ed about this grant, and as you can see in the report, it would be really wonderful improvements. So I thank staff very much for helping write the grant, and hopefully we'll get it. And I'm in favor of setting the hearing, the public hearing.
Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to set a public hearing to receive public comment on the 2020 Small Cities Program Application for 6:05 PM, Monday, February 10th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So along with that, if the town ends up applying for the Small Cities Grant, the state requires us to re-adopt our policies related to fair housing. In your packet, there's no proposed changes to the policies in their current form. Was there any question or comment? Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to adopt the Fair Housing Resolution and Fair Housing Policy as presented, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the documents?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And item J, also in connection with the Small Cities Grant, the town is required by the state to re-adopt policies related to equal opportunity, which was last revised just two years ago. No proposed changes in its current form. Were there any comments or questions to what's in your packet? Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to adopt the affirmative action policy and the compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 policy as presented, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the documents?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item K, Susan, just in time, welcome. Earlier this year, Gifts of Love Farm shared with the town that it would be making changes to its educational programming to better align with their mission, as well as reflect financial realities. Their lease with the town requires a level of educational programming be provided. So in your packets is an amended lease that contains the revised scope of these programs. They include things such as volunteer opportunities, an internship for a high school student, adult and family educational classes, plots that members of the community, community groups can use. Susan, again, I don't want to put you on the spot. Is there anything you wanted to add to this item?
I think it's all there.
Yep.
Just continuing to offer education to all ages and all the groups within the community.
Right, and I didn't, just so folks on TV know who you are, you're the Executive Director of Gifts of Love. Great. And, you know, for folks who don't know what Gifts of Love Farm does, they grow produce at the farm, much of which is donated to Simsbury Social Services, and helping families in need, just a wonderful program. Are there any questions to the amended lease?
I just had a question on what it was, what's so different about it? The amendment? Like what's included that wasn't there before?
What's not there that was there before was we had a grant to run in our district program, education program, bringing urban and suburban classes together.
Yep.
But that grant funding ceased, and we were unsuccessful in finding anything to replace it.
Okay, so that was just taken out? I knew that happened, but I wasn't sure.
Yep.
So just, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to approve the Gifts of Love Lease Amendment, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the lease amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for all you do for our town.
Thanks a lot.
Item I is the Volunteer Firefighter and Ambulance Personnel Tax Abatement Ordinance. So, the, the town currently offers our volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel with at least five years of experience, a tax abatement of $1,000 a year. Recent legislation from the state allows us to raise that amount to as much as $2,000 per year. And, you know, the Fire District believes that it is an important retention tool and recruiting tool for their 80-plus volunteers. So one thing that we could do tonight, if the board is supportive, is to put a work group together to look at proposed changes to the tax abatement ordinance. I wanted to open it up for discussion. Wendy?
No, I was just, I was going to say, I was really surprised, because I had no idea that that, that was how the firefighters and the emergency team got sort of compensated, right? I just didn't, never knew that that existed in a, in their taxes, so just surprised.
Yeah. And it's, it's pretty amazing, because if we didn't have a volunteer department, it would, it would cost us a lot of money.
Take the police department's budget and double it. That's how much.
Eighty-eight firefighters is how many people volunteer?
Yep.
Eric, I'd be happy to be on that work group.
Great. Would, would anyone else be interested in being on the work group?
Yeah, I, yeah, sure. I, I know a number of people, but sure.
Okay, wonderful. Any other conversation? Okay. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to re-establish the tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance work group that was originally created on January 28th, 2019, for the purpose of reviewing any potential changes to the volunteer firefighter and ambulance personnel tax abatement ordinance? I'll stop there.
I'll make a motion.
You'll make the motion?
I'll second it.
Second it. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And now, would there be a motion to appoint Wendy McStudis and Jackie Patos to serve on the work group?
So moved.
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
You'll be thrilled if you're not on.
Get them rolling.
Good. Item M is a follow-up to a presentation we had a number of weeks ago. At our last meeting, we heard a presentation about something called Community Choice Aggregation. CCA is basically a mechanism that allows individual towns or groups of towns to control their electricity purchasing. In order for this to be available in Connecticut, it would require enabling legislation by the state. The resolution in your packet would encourage the state to pass such, such legislation. And I want to be clear to anybody watching, that even if the state does pass enabling legislation, Simsbury or any community is under no obligation to adopt Community Choice Aggregation. And even if we do choose to adopt CCA, all of our residents are still free to use any electricity supplier that they wish. So we're not committing anybody to anything. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to adopt the attached resolution in support of state legislation enabling Community Choice Aggregation in Connecticut?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any conversation?
Just that this is the beauty of government doing nothing, but doing something at the same time.
I can tell you that there is...
It's just awesome.
The Clean Energy Task Force is lobbying our local representative too.
I, I'm all for it. We're not actually doing anything here. This is...
Well, I was gonna, I went to the state that, I reached out to Peter Millman too, and when he was here, there was only three, I think there was three towns, Mansfield, New Haven, Middletown, and since then, they've gotten five more. So people are starting to put reservations.
But I do think we're bringing our voice to it, and we are educating.
Yeah.
We're elevating a, a, a platform, to a platform for people, so there is something we are doing.
No, and I'm being somewhat flippant, but I mean, at the same time, we are, we are in the short session, they only do fiscal bills in the short session, so it's unlikely that they'll pass anything this time around. We probably wouldn't see anything for another two years. And generally, and unfortunately, our legislators don't listen to our communities, which is why I'm spouting off about this, is we've, we've recommended a number of good ideas, and the, the folks at, at the State House seem to know better. So it's particularly frustrating. So hopefully, they, they pick this one and listen to us. That would be a nice change of pace.
Agreed, okay. So we've, the motions have been made and seconded, any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Moving on to appointments and resignations. The Democratic Town Committee has submitted their recommended appointments for expiring terms on boards and commissions. I will first go through the reappointments.
Can we move, can we waive the reading of this and just accept the document as presented?
If we can do that, then I would be fine with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as our parliamentarian is good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Except the report as submitted?
Yeah.
Save you the, save you the 20 minutes of reading here?
Yeah, no problem. So this would be both reappointments and no appointments? Just want to be clear what we're...
I assume all these numbers are good?
All Democratic Town Committee recommendations.
I trust you, I'm good.
So, is there a, a motion effective tonight, January 13th, 2020, to accept the recommendations from the Democratic Town Committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
And thank you for the volunteers, because as we're about to do our side, it's not easy to get all these folks.
It is not, not at all. And just so I can find where I am. So next, our recommendations from the Personnel Subcommittee on Appointments and Reappointments. Would there be a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to accept the Personnel Subcommittee's recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Cheryl Cook's on here, wait a minute.
Yep, she is.
We tried to slip her on as many times as we could.
Glad I caught that.
Is there any other conversation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, thank you. This is throwing me off, because we're skipping ahead. Hold on, hold on.
I thought we sent ours in, we didn't send ours in?
No, you didn't get them.
Sweet, okay.
There's usually a couple months late.
I'll talk to our chairman.
And some resignations. Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to accept the resignation of Nancy Sheets as a regular member of the Community for Care?
So moved with our thanks.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion effective January 13th, 2020, to accept the resignation of Thomas Haran as a regular member of the Hometown Hero Selection Committee?
With our thanks.
With our thanks.
Just on a seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion to accept the resignation of Diane Madigan as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, retroactive to December 11th, 2019?
So moved.
Or second with our thanks.
I figured this one out, she's going on zoning, that's why she had to...
Yep.
All in favor?
So thanks.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any proposed changes to the minutes from our last meeting on December 16th? Okay, then they will stand. Are there any Selectmen liaison or Subcommittee reports?
I've got a quick one from our Wildlife Feeding Ordinance. Much like my, my note a couple of minutes ago, the state has been kicking around discussions. DEEP has asked for legislation to ban the, the feeding of wildlife on private residence, residence locations. It has obviously gotten some folks uproar on both sides of the aisle, or both sides of the issue, excuse me, not the aisle. Which is good, because it's timely, because we're proposing a very similar ordinance. Much, like I said before, though, they generally, they being the legislature, generally does not do non-fiscal-related bills in the short session, so I'm not anticipating the DEEP will act. So we're going to keep our ordinance on track. We are, and the Town Manager has done a great job of coordinating with DEEP and other departments to make sure that we're getting all the input we need. I'm going to say it now, just because I want to say it as many times as possible, because I know it's going to be challenging. The current draft has the banning of bird feeders in it during certain, certain portions of the year. I know that is probably going to cause the most outrage for some folks in town, including with my wife. Again, hear us out on why it's been proposed, why the timelines, et cetera. There will be multiple hearings on this. We will bring it to public safety in March for a full review and an endorsement or a rejection, and it will come to this group for a presentation. We will then schedule a public hearing if we decide we want to send it to public hearing, so, and then it will come back. So the public will get three, four, or five cracks at this one, if they so choose, so we're trying to make sure that we get as much input as possible. Again, I'm not trying to, to say anything to enrage folks. We were tasked with limiting the interactions or eliminating the interactions of dangerous wildlife, i.e. bears and coyotes, and potentially other wildlife with our residents, with our children. In order to accomplish that, there are things that are being discussed, like removing bird feeders, removing the food sources. One has to go with the other if you want the problem solved. If folks only want to go halfway, or they like it that yogi's in their front yard, well, then, you know, maybe this, this ordinance isn't what people want. So again, regardless of how you feel about it, please get educated on it from the public standpoint. Again, read what DEEP is proposing, you'll see what we're proposing, and I look forward to a robust discussion on the topic.
Good. Well, thanks for both of your work on this. Any other reports?
Just, Board of Ed hasn't met the meetings tomorrow night, so I, I'll report back on that. They're going to be talking a lot about the 2020 budget. And also, the task force finally got connected on that. And they're, they meet three times this year, as far as this facilities plan. So that's at the end of the month, so looking forward to hearing what's going on with that.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's going to be, it's going to be important.
I don't know what's going on with that, so it'll be interesting.
Anybody else?
Tom, you want to use a timer of the audience to mention the strategic plan update we had